Started. Thank you all for joining the November 1st Lewisville City Council meeting. And Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and because of COVID-19, the meeting's being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attending can raise their hand by clicking the raise hand button that you'll find at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in must enter star nine on your phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and our clerk unmute you, you'll need to tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you'd like to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. ASL and Spanish translation are being offered for the meeting. You can find those services by clicking translation at the bottom of your Zooms Zoom screen. Thank you, everyone, for helping us maintain meeting decorum by following these directions. And I'll turn it to City Clerk Muse for a roll call. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson? Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Stolzmann? Here. And Councilmember Dickinson signaled that he was here. He just was finishing up his supper. And so that takes us through our roll call, and I'll ask if there's a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
There's a second. Thank you. There's a motion by Mayor Protem Maloney and a second by Councilmember Dickinson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries and the agenda is approved. That takes us to public comments on items that are not on our agenda or items that are on our consent agenda. Any members of the public care to comment tonight? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the consent agenda from council members? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a quick comment. You know, I, I always look at the consent agenda. And I'm always struck by how much we don't discuss because staff has done such a super job of putting things together. And so I approve all the work that's been done that we seemingly just easily pass over. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? Thank you. The motion carries. And so that takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items not on our agenda. Any council comments? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have no updates for you this evening. We're very much looking forward to having the task force members from the Equity Diversity Inclusion Task Force, and we thank you for including this on the agenda and look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, City Manager Davis. And so our first item of regular business tonight is actually recognition of service of Councilmember Lipton. On our agenda, it shows Councilmember Lipton's service on council from 2013 till 2021, and it starts him in planning commission in 1994. But I can say I did a quick search of the Lewisville Times in preparation for this meeting, and he was on the planning commission a previous term before 94. So he was definitely on there in the eighties even. So I just am going to really briefly share my screen. Can you guys see my screen? Is it a slide with newspaper articles and Councilmember Lipton? All right, so this is from the Lewisville Times, and you couldn't believe all the articles that came up when you search Jeff Lipton, including pictures of his son, who's also named Jeff Lipton, on his little football, junior football team. So that was awfully cute. But this is a picture of Councilmember Lipton from the eighties, right around the time he first got appointed to the planning commission. And there were countless articles about Centennial Valley, the CTC, other areas of town, various land use applications, and Councilmember Lipton's comments on those in there. So it's really wonderful to get to kind of go back down memory lane and revisit some of the history and all of the years of service that Councilmember Lipton and prior to that planning commission and then planning commission chairperson. So he really has spent a lot, a lot of years, close to 40 years in service to our community. He has a heart of a public servant, also was public service in a state job. And so we just really appreciate all of his efforts, and it shows all around town. And so I want to give everyone in council a chance to say thank you and any memories they have of Councilmember Lipton. But before I turn it over to anyone else, there's one other group I want to recognize, and that's Councilmember Lipton's family. If you think of Marguerite and Jeff's kids, they really have put in a big sacrifice over time, missing out on family dinners and other activities from all the time that Jeff has really put in to the community and to helping us all. So I'd like to thank his family for all of their sacrifice and their efforts over the years as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to others. If you'd like to say a few words about Councilmember Lipton. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Um, thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, I think that your tribute was beautiful. So thank you very much for that. I will note, I had done the same kind of search because it seemed like he was on earlier than whatever the timeframe. So yes, it was 30 plus years. You know, he wrote a letter to council, which I very much appreciated, which we received yesterday. One of the things that he wrote in there, because he had, he had a lot of really, really important messages. But one of the messages was, this is where all of us choose to live. And so, you know, we are all citizens of a wonderful city. And we have, you know, a lot of constituents. We all choose to live here, and we live here for a reason. And, you know, Jeff's amazing service to Lewisville over those three plus decades, whether on planning commission or on city council, is where he shared his time and his talents to help shape this wonderful town. You know, he's left us with a lot of sage thoughts about respect, collaboration, and teamwork. But I, but I think about what we value in Lewisville, what's important to us in Lewisville. You know, we always talk about, you know, the wonderful small town feel, the iconic downtown. And as you were going through a lot of those articles, Mayor, you know, a lot of those pointed out Centennial Valley, they pointed out CTC and the storage tech area, whatever you want to call that. But there are a lot of other things, a lot of the amenities that we all appreciate. You know, 40% of the acreage in Lewisville is open space, and we have a lot of trails. And I've spent a lot of time the last few weeks on this trail. So, you know, I give Jeff a lot of credit for that forethought. I think we will miss his sage thoughts, his framing, and his, you know, endless drive for collaboration. So with that, I'd like to just do a cheers with my glass of water to Jeff Lipton for all of his years of service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. And Councilmember Fahey?
Uh, thank you. Yes, I will also echo all of the wonderful thoughts that have already been expressed by the mayor and by Mayor Protem. Jeff has been indeed a truly dedicated public servant for over 30 years, and he was instrumental in the development, not only of our physical infrastructure, but also of our small town values. He's, he's been a proponent of developing the downtown business area and promoting just business all around town. And I will say, he was my opponent when the first time I ran for council, and he won. And I remember at the first meeting, there was a discussion about a development project, and I went up to him afterwards and said, you were the right person to handle that, because he knew much more about process than I did at that time. For the last two years since I've been on council with him, he has served as a mentor and a friend, not just to me, but to all the council members. And, and he would just be really missed. He's just been a true friend and mentor, and I want to thank him for everything he's done for the city and for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been a really fun two years with Jeff. I think that, you know, I spent a lot of time with him outside of meetings as well, and you know, he's, he's so, one of the things I really appreciate about Jeff is that he's so honest and straightforward about what he thinks. I don't always agree with what he thinks, but those make for really good discussions because he doesn't hold back when he disagrees with me. What are you talking about? That's crazy. And then he lets me know why, and it's, and it's really informative and I really, as Deb said, I appreciate his mentorship over these two years, but also his friendship, and I know that I will get to continue to have both for, for many years to come. And yeah, I just really appreciate him. And the last thing I wanted to just sort of say is I find it so interesting the difference between the way he speaks and the way he writes, and I find the way he writes to be incredibly beautiful, which is not to say that the way he speaks is not. But, but it's so eloquent when he writes and when he takes the time and the letter he wrote, I think, was an example of that. But he really is a fantastic writer and then a very direct speaker. And I think he speaks and writes differently, and I've enjoyed getting both sides in there. So thanks for your time, Jeff.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lay?
Thanks. Sorry for the delay in getting on. So a couple of things. One is that this past week, I don't know what's been said, so I apologize if I'm going over old ground here, but when I learned that he wasn't going to be here for the tribute, you know, I was kind of, I was sad about that, but I also, you know, hope that he'll get a chance to, to see this because I, I, I know you all have said very heartfelt things. But he said to me, oh, you know, it's the drip in the bucket, right, that just dissipates as it, you know, roils the waters for just a second, and then it's gone and you hardly miss me. And I mean, that to me is absurd. I told him that, which I'm accustomed to doing. I think everybody has probably had plenty of moments within the meetings and outside the meetings to say, to call BS on it. Because, and he's a fun person, frankly, to call BS on it, at least outside. But what I would also say is we are going to miss him for all the reasons that I'm sure you guys have said very eloquently, and I'm not going to go back over that ground right now. I met Jeff more than 20 years ago because I was on the planning commission as a, that was my first foray into understanding or trying to learn about how the city operated. And he was so gracious and so respectful of my questions that were plenty stupid and plenty elementary and kind of bringing me along as to how things had gone and sort of what the process was and some of the history. And he did that for everybody on the planning commission. He ran a beautiful meeting. Really, I mean, just a master at that. And so that, that was my first understanding of kind of how terrific he was, and he said depth, preparation, understanding, and ability to speak. I think the other thing is, it's interesting that Councilmember Dickinson indicates that there's, you know, difference in the way he speaks and the way he writes. I think maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's true. I think it may be in what he wrote was kind of a farewell in a, in a way. So maybe it was different that way, but I have found him to be pretty transparent about what he's thinking about things and it's been enormously helpful. And there are plenty of things that he has disagreed with me about, and I disagreed with him about, and I think the one thing that I would say finally about it is that I think I have seen over time on this council particularly, and maybe even reaching back. It's not apples to apples, but from planning commission to today, I've seen Jeff's views evolve particularly on things like affordable housing and on equity issues, you know, which are incredibly important. And these are, this is a quality that I think, you know, he was driving at a bit in his note, is that, that to the extent that there's disagreement, it's good, it ought to test each of us, or each of us ought to test our views against others, because he typically spoke persuasively, if not always, you know, to everybody, certainly brought up good and well-considered points. And so I think that is something I've sort of learned about. I think he's got, you know, somebody probably has already mentioned this, but you know, Jeff and his 40, 40-year career with the university or something like that is 30 years, some plus career with the city. It's an enormous amount of institutional memory walking away from us. It makes me, it gives me a lot of concern generally, but I think, you know, he's a person who did what, I don't know, Dennis probably knows this, you know, between $2 and $3 billion worth of infrastructure projects. And so when he spoke about the concerns, I wasn't always persuaded by what he said, but I could never doubt that he had pretty good reasons for what he was expressing concern about. So I called him up a couple of weeks ago, and the final thing that I'll say is, called him up a couple of weeks, and I said, I don't know how the heck we're going to do this without you. And I think that's when he shared some other bromide about, yeah, you know, I'll just fade away. No way. But I, I do think we'll miss that. Thankfully, he's not going anywhere. And we all know that he'll be available if anybody wants to talk with him, although he'll probably be a little slower to call back is my bet. But I'm, you know, what a sterling career he's had. And, you know, I can't say enough good things about, about him. I wish he were here right now, but you know, he'd probably cry or something, so I'm not going to. I'm not going to fault him too much. Anyway, he's listening or he listens to a tape. Don't be a stranger.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate Councilmember Lipton's service to the city. You know, public service is something that's very important to me. As a, as a fellow public servant, I have the utmost respect for his, for his years of service to the city from a time when I was a child and he was on planning commission, you know, helping to shape our community. So I just want to, I just don't need to reiterate what other people have said, but I just want to say how much I appreciate his, his service and his commitment to our community, and that we will certainly miss.
All right. Thank you all. And so normally we would take a 15-minute break and have coffee and cake all together in person, but with COVID-19, we can't. So next time you see Councilmember Lipton at a coffee shop, be sure to buy him some coffee and cake and take, take some time to chat with him. And so we will move on now after those thoughtful words. And our next agenda item is the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Task Force Final Recommendations. And so I see Anthony popped up on the screen. And so Anthony, I'll turn it right over to you to take us through this, but just before I do, oh, and Emily's here as well. Great. Hi, Emily. And just before I do, I just want to thank both Anthony and Emily, the consultants, but all of the task force members for all of your effort and for just the thoughtful, meaningful time you've put into this. And so the council is here and ready to hear your final recommendations, and hopefully we can all then get to work as a community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anthony and Emily.
Thank you, Mayor Stolzmann. We're so thrilled to be with you tonight. You know, just as a quick icebreaker, when you were asking everyone about their Halloween experience, in the spirit of inclusion, this year, my wife and I hosted a family who's just immigrated here from Ethiopia. And they have two young children, and with their grandparents in tow, they experienced their very first Halloween in the United States. And so it was so fun to, to see, you know, our culture through their eyes on Halloween night. So it was a ton of fun and made it even more memorable for our families. At any rate, we're going to jump right in here to a really wonderful update as we close out this work for this chapter with the Lewisville EDI Task Force. So we're going to go through very quickly, quick introductions of the task force members. We're going to talk to you a little bit about the objectives again and really start zeroing in on some of the priorities that the task force is suggesting that we look at, that you look at as a city council. We also want to make sure that we put those recommendations in the context of the shifting demographics that are unfurling across Boulder County and in the city of Lewisville. Finally, we'll just highlight a couple of things from our final report that you can read on your own time. And then the main show is to hear from the EDI Task Force members directly. I think we have nearly every member of the task force with us this evening. And so we've queued up a few to share their thoughts, but everyone is certainly welcome to share. And then we'll close with our appreciation. So with that, again, my name is Anthony Graves. I use he/him pronouns. I am the principal of Graves Civic Solutions. Emily?
Thanks, Anthony. Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Shamsadeen. I use she/her pronouns, and I am the principal and owner of BSD Consulting.
So very quickly with us, we have, and there may be, maybe one person missing, but I just want to reacquaint you with all of the members of the task force who have really been driving this work. Stephanie Barr, Nancy Commons, Yannick Duke, Francisco Estevez, JoJo Fulmer, Gray Ski, Hazlina Hashim, David Nant Hines, Ronald Reeves, Leanne Torada, and Lou Yu. Emily, would you like to talk about the objectives?
Yeah, so we wanted to just take a moment to sort of ground ourselves in the job that you all set out for us to, for us to do. So the objective of the task force was to provide advisory recommendations to you all to Lewisville City Council with respect to community issues affecting Black, Indigenous, and people of color and other marginalized identities. And so that is obviously what we grounded ourselves in and the work that we have been doing for the last nine months. So we had our final task force meeting last week on Thursday, the 28th, which I have to say was a little bit more emotional than even I expected it to be. And I think some of the other members would concur. We worked hard not just to complete the objective, but to also create a space and to create relationships in which these really honest and inclusive conversations could happen. And I think you were all feeling how grateful we were that that was, that was able to happen. So a quick kind of look back. So again, we started this journey back in March, I think that's right. And there's been quite a bit of work over these last nine months. So one of the first things after going through an inclusive process of even figuring out and seeding of the task force members, we spent quite a bit of time really figuring out and selecting topics, the topics that we wanted to explore. As you can imagine, there's, there's kind of an endless number of things, right, that any sort of group or focus group could, could focus their attention on. And so we wanted to make sure that we curated a set of topics that felt the most relevant for your community. With that, we convened five focus groups. Those focus groups were all held virtually, as I'm sure you all know, as we're still managing safety with the COVID pandemic. And I would say that, you know, a part of what we worked hard to do, and then I say we, I am speaking of we as in both Anthony and I, but also the task force as a whole, worked really hard to use a bunch of different outreach and recruitment strategies and tactics, right, to make sure that we had a really inclusive and representative group of folks participating in the focus groups themselves. So after the focus groups, for each of those, we made sure that one, we of course took detailed notes and created summary reports for each of the focus groups, which is a part of what really allowed us to review all of the feedback that we heard doing each of these sessions. And I know that this will come at the end, but also wanting to give a huge shout out to all those who chose to participate and really came to bear their hearts and share their stories about their experiences in the community. So all of that allowed us to, again, really dig into some discussion and prioritize what we all felt we were hearing from the community, what the needs were. And the task force really jumped in. They shared their own lived experience and really provided kind of a supplemental information and really added to what we were hearing from the community as well. And all of that led us to being able to kind of identify high-level themes from everything that we heard from the group. And those high-level themes, of course, we engaged in some really great discussion about how do we turn those themes into really solid, actionable recommendations for the city and for city council. And of course, that was a huge part of what guided the final report that you all have in front of you. Now, you will notice the report, we hope, is, is thorough. And when I say thorough, we also mean long. So it is a long, thorough report. And we know that it's full of a lot of information. It is full of a lot of recommendations. And so we wanted to really say, well, where, where maybe could you start, right? How do you sort of take all of that information and really distill it into kind of next steps? What happens the day after? And so a part of the conversation that we had with the task force was just that, was really trying to get a sense from them about what they perceive to be kind of the most important priorities that they would recommend that city council takes on immediately. And the two places that they really wanted to start were safe and welcoming environment, which includes language justice and public accommodation, access to services. So when we think about safe and welcoming environment, including language justice, again, that is, that's the culture, right, of, of the community. It is the way that people feel. Do they feel seen? Do they feel heard? Do they feel respected? Do they feel safe? Do they feel included? Right? And knowing that that is so key to any diversity, equity, and inclusion effort, right, is the way that people actually feel inside of their communities. But also really recognizing that a part of feeling safe and included and welcomed is making sure that folks have access, right, to the services that they need to make their lives full. And so those two really rose up as priorities, and folks also really named that a part of why they are priority is because really all of these other things, housing, youth engagement, public health, really sort of stem from those, that they feel strongly that these two really provide a solid foundation that really creates and allows opportunities for kind of all of the other work to happen. So again, safe and welcoming environment and language justice, right, the ability that someone can access services and can speak the language of their heart, how important that is to someone feeling included. And of course, being able to access any services that folks need as well.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you. So with that, we wanted to start taking it down another level and give you some specific examples within those two categories where the Lewisville City Council, where you can really start exacting outcomes to move these priorities forward. I also want to underscore that for these elements that Emily was highlighting, this came directly from the task force members in our final discussions in terms of where you might start. So there was pretty widespread consensus across Louisville Task Force, as well as some nuggets from various focus groups about the idea that you can create a dedicated EDI manager or a deputy position with appropriate support and resources, as well as decision-making authority to move things forward. So the sentiment here is that you don't want a somebody that you've appointed without any real authority to get traction on these issues and to continue to move this this agenda forward. So somebody who really has that executive level access, who has the attention of the city manager and the council to help move this agenda forward. Second, they suggested that the EDI Task Force become a permanent city commission or to create a comparable structure. So it was really clear that there was a lot of community built around this function. And it also created a space where people felt comfortable talking about issues as they're impacting people's lives. And so the task force feels that there is value in continuing some sort of structure where a group of residents or people who are familiar with Louisville can continue to move forward recommendations and offer council advice to the city government. More social programming. Who doesn't love a party, right? So when we think about all of the fun things that you already have available in Louisville with the open space and the programming downtown, really thinking through how you can continue to turn up the cultural representation and the diversity of events that you program in downtown Louisville. Next, providing all city resources and communications in Spanish language and think about hiring bilingual staff. So this this may give some people pause when you see the word all in capital letters. But we're going to talk a little bit about the shifting demographics across Boulder County and even in the community to make you see the the strategic importance of investing in the way that you communicate with not just your constituents today, but constituents of the future. Then finally, safe space. So thinking about how we create safe space and that clean and safe environment. So flags are a great way to do that, really trying to bolster various cultural identities, including the pride and transgender flags within the community. Emily, would you like to take the next step?
Absolutely. So one of the other things that came out was, you know, really creating some guidelines, protocols, and training to help for to help city staff and other service providers become better equipped to really help those who are facing language barriers. That was an important element is when folks need need to have support, need to be able to access services. And you can again, think about the wide range of services, right, that a community offers, that folks have the understanding, that they have the capacity, they have the tools and the skills that they need to be able to do that for folks as needed. And of course, the second bullet, ensure dignified and equitable treatment of all residents and guests, regardless of economic status, race, or language needs. You know, a huge part of that is is really having to, you know, put a lens on all of the different ways that somebody is actually going to interact, right, with city services and ensuring that all of those interactions are happening in a place that is that is really founded and and built on dignity and equitable treatment. And of course, wanting to make sure that service providers understand the guidelines and the laws surrounding both ADA compliance as well as how to access ASL services when needed. Anthony?
Emily, one other thing I would say about this last bullet and ensuring that all of the staff are well trained, right? And and you're clear about your responsibilities under ADA that also shields or limits liability of the city government in the event that there is noncompliance and there are issues that are uncovered. So, you know, again, those that's just a snapshot of the two focus areas that the task force is suggesting that you focus on as elected members of the government. But there are many other recommendations across all four or five priority areas that the council outlined that you'll find in the full report. You'll have a chance to digest it at your own pace. But we thought it was very important to situate both the top recommendations for immediate action and perhaps some longer term change in the context of what's happening with the demographic shift across Boulder County and in Louisville. And so, and by the way, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the city manager, Megan, for, you know, really prompting us to look not only at the 2010 data, but then to take the most recent census data from 2020 and really articulate what that story is telling and how it connects into this broader narrative that's come directly from the community regarding the experience of people of color and other marginalized identities in the city. So thank you, Megan, for helping us to to think through the bookends of the census data from 2010 and 2020. So this is a snapshot of your community based on the final census that's just happened here. And so this should not be really surprising to many of you, right? But we thought we should take a look at it. So according to the current census, the most current census, eighty-one percent of the population of Louisville are approximately seventeen thousand people identify on the census as being white alone. Okay? But then as you go around, I call it the cheese wheel. I think I'm hungry here at the end of the day. And so you can imagine your favorite different slices of cheese here. But when you start to look through, you can see that Hispanic or Latino identifying individuals is eight percent or approximately seventeen hundred folks. Individuals who identify as being multiracial, having two or more races as part of their identity are about five percent. And then the the next largest is the Asian American Pacific Islander community at four percent, around nine hundred thirty-five residents. African American at one percent or one hundred forty-nine-ish folks. And then it's noting zero percent for Native American. That's just statistically, like within the context of the total population count as a percent of this. If you were to use the decimal point, it would be a little smaller. But it gives you a sense of what you look like today. But now we're going to look briefly at the future. So we're going to step into a time machine and also take a snapshot of what's changed since the last census. And so that cheese wheel is nice, but it doesn't really tell you how the numbers are moving, how they're evolving. This is where we start to see the change. So between the 2010 and 2020 census, you'll see that across Boulder County, the the number of individuals who identify as white alone has lost the greatest number of people based on that self-identification on the census. And so there are nearly four thousand fewer people who identify as white alone on the 2020 census than in 2010, right? You're also seeing that there's a little bit of population loss across Boulder County as a whole. Meanwhile, individuals who identify as multiracial grew in the largest amount by over two thousand individuals. And this is between ages of zero to seventeen. So this represents the future, right, as we're looking at the youth across Boulder County. And then the second fastest growing and the biggest shift, second biggest shift is within the Latino Hispanic community, right, which you can see there on the far right of the screen. So this shows you a story of where the youth are growing. And right now, it means that you are diversifying across Boulder County. So this is another Boulder County snapshot of the data. This represents again, the population shift between 2010 and 2020. So again, I talked about in that first box, the the slight decline in total population across Boulder County by six hundred thirty-six folks. You'll see that three thousand eight hundred fifty-five people who are white identifying are fewer, three thousand eight hundred fifty-five people fewer. Meanwhile, though, if you skip all the way over to the right two columns, right? People who are identifying as multiracial, that grew by ninety-seven point six percent since the 2010 census, adding over two thousand four hundred people who identify as multiracial. But as a cohesive block, right, within an ethnic identity, the Hispanic and Latino origin identifying community grew by almost four percent or over five hundred people. And that's just in Boulder County. Now we take a snapshot of your jurisdiction, your municipality, Louisville, and the percent change from 2010 to 2020. And it tells a very similar story. And so if you look at growth, you are growing as a municipality. So across all all categories except for Native American or American Indian identifying folks, right? That is the only shrinking population in Louisville. All of the other categories are growing. So you're growing as a population. But look at the rate of growth. So people identifying as white alone grew by nine point two percent from fifteen thousand to about seventeen thousand residents in Louisville. The African American population grew by forty-three percent. And then if you skip ahead to the Asian American Pacific Islander community, they grew by twenty-eight percent. Individuals identifying as multiracial grew by a hundred eighty-five percent or more, a hundred eighty-five, a hundred eighty-nine percent. And then finally, the Hispanic Latino community grew by thirty-one point eight percent as well to seventeen hundred folks. And this is the largest group of ethnic minorities that you currently have within the city of Louisville, according to the 2020 census. This gives you census over census, a similar sense of the percent of the population in the city of Louisville. So when you're thinking about pure population percentage and how that has shifted over the last census, gives you a clear sense that it's going to be increasingly important to be more intentional about equity, diversity, and inclusion as as the identity of your population is continuing to evolve and at a pretty significant rate. So I won't go through every element here, but just to highlight again, the the population identifying as white alone shrunk from eighty-six percent of the population or eighty-five point nine percent to eighty-one percent over the last decade. Meanwhile, in the far right, you know, the Latino population's grown from seven point two to eight point two percent. Multiracial from one point nine to four point eight, you can see the narrative that's developing regarding the shifting demographics in your city. And so now that we've given you the high level recommendations and focus areas from the task force, and we've talked to you about the demographic context of what's evolving across Boulder County and in the city of Louisville. What I want to do now is to take just thirty seconds to allow Emily to highlight some things from the report before we turn it over to the task force. Emily?
Thanks, Anthony. So yes, we we're not going to spend too much time on the report. As Anthony said, we obviously hope that you all will take the necessary time to really read and comb through the report. But a few things we just wanted to highlight. So one is the report starts off with a letter to Mayor Stoltzman, which is really our 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 desire to, you know, thank the mayor and to thank you all for this work, to acknowledge the task force members and to really provide our gratitude that we were able to to engage with you all in this process. The first sort of chunk of the report, if you will, is, you know, executive summary. It has a timeline as a refresher for everything that that has gone on. And we then talk about the task force selection process. So really kind of a deep dive overview of what that looked like, who was involved, the accommodation strategies that that we tried to use, how we onboarded the groups, et cetera. An overview then of the focus groups, right, and the the themes and the the areas of interest that that we talked about. And one of the things that I wanted to point out is that there is a section called Keeping an Open Mind: Data-Informed EDI. And wanting to just point that out because it's important to acknowledge that we spent a lot of time curating this feedback that we were really lucky enough to receive. But we have to make sure that we understand that this is a bit of feedback, right? And there's an entire community, an additional feedback, experiences, thoughts, reflections, recommendations that are still out there. And so being data informed is an important part of of the process. There's another chunk of what Anthony just reviewed, which is again, kind of the context around demographic data that we use to inform the process and how that has in fact shifted. There's also a section that you will see that really is the constituent feedback. And I know that you all received at the last meeting kind of a high level overview of some of that feedback. A part of what you will find in the report really is a series of quotes that we hope will really bring all of that to life. Quotes from the community, feedback from the community that you'll see throughout. And then there is, of course, a couple of sections that really dig into the recommendations. So a part of the way that we framed it was really to identify what the issue was and then to identify what is the future state, right, the desired future state? And what are some of the recommendations to help you get there? And then finally wrapping up the report with some additional recommendations from the consulting team. And hopefully, a word of encouragement, you know, to you all as as you really begin this journey and really noting that even though we have been in this process for the last nine months, today really marks the beginning of the work and the beginning of the journey. And then there's a couple of additional resources that we included at the end. But that is again, just very high level. We tried to make sure that the report was was, you know, inclusive and really kind of gave you a good, a good view of really what the full process looked like, looked like in and out. So again, we hope that you will take the time to to read through the report at your own leisure. Anthony?
Thank you, Emily. Well, look, that is that is enough of the Anthony and Emily show. We're really just a warm up for the the main attraction here. It's our pleasure now to cede the floor to the individuals that you've empowered to lead this work, to advise you and to be your thought partner and how we go forward as a community. And so all the members of the task force, or most of them, I think, are here with us. And and everyone may take some time to express themselves. But we wanted to tee up just a couple of folks first, just to make sure in case we have some some shy participants out there, they get a little feedback right off the top. I'd like to first acknowledge David Nant Hines, Hazlina Hashim, and Stephanie. David Nant, would you like to begin?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Anthony. Yes, so my name is David Nant Hines. I am one of those multiracial individuals that Anthony identified as a growing part of the population. I bought my house here in 2012. I actually identify as a white presenting mestizo man. So if you're not familiar with that term mestizo, it also means multiracial. But part of my lineage is indigenous from South America. My mother's from Ecuador. So that's that's part of how I identify culturally as well. And then I have a wife and daughter, biological daughter, and I have two stepchildren as well. And so my wife is a proud indigenous woman, and my daughter is obviously multiracial as well, and she's ten years old. And it's been it's been an interesting journey here in Louisville. I'll say that much. I will, for one, appreciate the small town feel of Louisville. It's been really amazing just having that to raise my daughter in that's the space since she's been a year old or a little less than a year old when we bought her house. And she's made some amazing friends. She's really benefited in some ways from just having so much support through this community. And then there's been other ways that have been kind of challenging as well, just in terms of. I mean, I I came here just thinking like, you know, I want to tell a story because I think data says numbers and things like that, but it doesn't always give the deeper the deeper experiences that I know I've had and other people in my family and neighborhood have had as well. And I was just thinking about something that happened about a month or so ago. One of our neighbors, one of my daughter's friends, is a young girl who's I who's black presenting from a multiracial family. She has a brother who's a year older. So he's he's a year older than my daughter. She's eleven. He's eleven. And there was another boy that was playing with him and they were, I guess they got a little bit kind of rough, kind of pushing each other a little bit, and the white boy called him the N-word. And, you know, I found that out from the mother, from the mother who identifies as black, that this had happened because she wanted me to be aware, since my daughter also plays with these kids. And then she, you know, we talked and she kind of told me the story of what happened. She went to the father of this boy and said, you know, I know the boys are pushing each other. I know it's it's not okay for my son to push your son. But I do want to tell you that your son called my son the N-word. And the father said, well, I'm okay with that. You know, I'm okay that he used that word. And for me, I think what brought up for me is like, I think it's important that we start to have spaces where we can talk about these things as a community and how to handle them. You know, obviously, I don't want to. What I've learned through doing racial equity work, and just to give you a little background, I work for the county. I'm part of, I'm one of the co-chairs for the CREAT Committee for the county that advises the commissioners on racial equity practices. And, you know, it's important not to shame or other anybody, that all voices feel included. And so that's what I'm curious of, like, how can we create spaces here in Louisville where we can have conversations, even if they're difficult ones, with people from with very different perspectives coming together just to try to figure out? how do we live more harmoniously together, being that there's these different viewpoints here? And also set some kind of ground rules around this can't happen because this this is harmful and it can be hurtful and traumatic even. So that's that's what I wanted to share today. And just just again, appreciate you all listening and and wanted to add, you know, I'm I'm more than happy to keep contributing in the future because this is my community and I really love you all. So thank you.
Thank you, Davidon. Let's now go to Hazlina for a few words. Hazlina?
Hi, everyone. I'm Hazlina Hashim, a single mom, Asian ethnicity, and my son is multiracial. So he's contributing to the increasing numbers that you see on the chart that Anthony presented. And I also just want to say thank you, Davidon, for sharing that story. How powerful. I agree with Davidon in that, like, you know, when I thought about, like, what is it that I want to say? I didn't want to contribute to more numbers or data, but I wanted to share with the city council and all of you all here about sometime this summer, I actually thought about, you know, downsizing and I wanted to move in. I got priced out of Lewisville. Housing is one of the topic, you know, in that report that I I'm sure you will all read. But the housing aside, seeing how well the EDI Task Force, you know, has been progressing at the time, like, you know, at the late summer. I I thought like, no way, like, I can't move out of Lewisville, even though I'm priced out. Like, I want to see this through. Like, I want, you know, like, we've done the focus group. We heard so much from the community. And we have just, I have to applaud the city for hiring the consultants that we have because they were amazing. I don't think we would have been able to go as far as we had, had it not been for Anthony and Emily and Sakari for helping as well. Yeah, and I think that's true. I am sure every single task force member will say that. And seeing that progress made me feel like, yeah, I want I want to be a part of this community. And I think of us like as a team, you know, like this task force member and the city and the city council. And then I thought like, but it's not a relay. We're not just passing this baton or passing this recommendation. We want to run with you, you know, and at least for me, like, I want to run with you guys and finish. Not that I don't think this is a race that we could finish, but I, like Emily said, this is baby step. Let's let's go further. Let's let's roll up our sleeves and go to the next step.
Thank you, Hazlina. So I I made a mistake. Stephanie's not with us. I'm going to take a gamble here and maybe call a couple of folks, but really open it up to other members of the task force who'd like to share some brief thoughts with the team. Jojo, might I be bold or would you like to say? I'm sorry, go ahead, Emily.
I'm sorry to sorry to interrupt Anthony. There's some hands raised in the panel. I don't want, I don't know if you wanted to call on Francisco has a hand up.
Great, thank you. I couldn't see that. Thank you, Mayor. Friend?
Hi, everyone. Madam Mayor, elected leaders, I really applaud all of you for providing public funds to execute this study. I believe I talk for the entire task force members in thanking you for finding new ways to make Lewisville, Colorado a better place for all to live and prosper. You know, in doing this study, I would sometimes canvas the map just to see what other cities are doing regarding diversity initiatives. And I looked at cities like that are trying to effectuate positive changes such as Huntington, West Virginia, Northtown, Pennsylvania, Alpharetta, Georgia, New Orleans, Louisiana, Tallahassee, Florida, and Las Vegas, Nevada, incidentally. And I find that all of them have a common trajectory in that they want to make their communities better, more welcoming. And and I think that we are achieving that in this report. I believe the report you have is professionally done. It has solid recommendations. It captures our thoughts and recommendations, and it expands on ideas. You know, when the city builds on what the report has and continues to work that is being recommended, I firmly believe that the city of Lewisville, Colorado will be a benchmark for other cities to model against. So thanks again for this opportunity, Mayor. It was an honor and privilege to be part of the study and to serve. Most importantly, I should tell everyone that I have gained new friends via the process, and for that, I am forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisco. Okay, I'm finally seeing the hands now, Mayor. So let's go to Jojo and then we'll go to Nancy. Jojo?
Hi, yeah, and I also would like to say just thank you for investing in this, like, all of the money into these task forces and to get these consulting teams. And I just hope that this is the beginning of a long process to make Lewisville a better and safer place. And I really hope that the work doesn't end here or doesn't even end like five years from now, but I hope that this work will continue for, well, as long as we need it, which I guess is pretty much indefinitely. And it will definitely not be easy, but being with everyone in this task force has shown me that it really can be done.
Thank you, Jojo. And I'd like to remind everyone that Jojo has the privilege of being both youngest and wisest member of this task force. So, Jojo, thank you so much for your continued support. So I will go by hands quickly. I see Nancy is next. So Nancy, why don't you go ahead? And I think, Nick and Grace, you might want to say some words, I think. Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, I think I might be the oldest, not wisest member of the task force. There are a couple of things that are really important to me. And one, of course, I thank everybody for doing this, but I'm cynical. I've been doing this work as part of my career. I started as a bilingual teacher. I moved to Lewisville in nineteen eighty one. And so I I really hope that this can go beyond. We did the task force. We got recommendations. It'll be put on the shelf, and now let's worry about something else. I have confidence in the city council that you are sincere in your desire to make Lewisville a place where everybody feels they belong. I know it was mentioned, Emily mentioned the last meeting that we had as the task force was emotional. And I was shocked at myself because that I I carried the cynicism with me. How powerful it has been to be a part of this work. I came here in nineteen eighty one, moved into an old miner's house on Front Street. It's Cocapelle Plaza now. And I moved to Lewisville like a lot of people because I could get more square footage than in Boulder. But after a while, I started to think about whether I should be living in Lewisville when my life's work was dedicated to equity and social justice and particularly working with culturally and linguistically diverse students and their families as a teacher and as a professor. I don't feel that I don't belong here anymore. I really feel like Lewisville can become a place where everybody does feel welcome, does feel like that they belong, and that, as Francisco said, that we can become a model for other small towns. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Shall we go to Unique and then to Grace?
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to thank the city of Lewisville and Anthony and Emily for facilitating such a a great undertaking of this task force. I feel like I was a part of something. I think the work that we did with compiling all of our ideas and thoughts and envisioned for the future was really listened to, was really documented in the report. I think the city of Lewisville and Boulder County is changing and that our our work in the task force and the report is a reflection of that. And it 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 warms my heart that I was able to participate in and that Lewisville is committed to leading with that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Unique. Grace?
Hi, Ron Reeves was not able to be here tonight, so he actually sent me a statement that I'd like to read on his behalf. So this is from Ron. I want to thank and challenge the city of Lewisville. First of all, thank you for putting together such a diverse and wonderful group in the EDI Task Force. We were able to connect as a group and just know that we are going to continue to push the city to make the needed changes. The challenge is to not only make changes, including the suggestions from the task force, but to but continue to make the positives within the city even better as well. As an African American male on the task force, I learned more about the love needed to support each other in this city. The change that is needed to not only make the city more welcoming, but better fit to support and encourage individuals from different backgrounds. This includes housing improvements needed to not only be more affordable, but to be inviting with the application process, language options, and translators if needed. Lastly, I want to continue to push for an EDI position within the city and not just a position, but a department, and for those individuals to not serve as the sole individuals responsible for improvement. A plan, a continued task force, and metrics are what I hope to see. Thank you always for this opportunity.
Thank you, Grace. Go ahead.
Sorry, yes. He inspired me to write some words down, too. So I'm Grace G. I'm a resident of Ward One, and I've been here for a little over a decade. Thank you, Mayor Mayor Stoltzman and city council members for your interest in equity, diversity, and inclusion for the city of Lewisville and for creating this task force to forward that work. As a resident of that of the city, it's meaningful that you put action behind this interest. It's really been a privilege to work alongside this very powerful group of people with a vast range of knowledge, influence, and experience. The collective expertise amongst us is potent, and I hope that city council will continue to forward a way to tap into this knowledge. The recommendations address what we have uncovered as pain points that are barriers to welcoming a fuller, wider community to Lewisville. My hope is that my hope is to fairly quickly experience some of the more visible recommendations while the other lengthier recommendations are being addressed behind the scenes. I hope our findings create empathy and understanding of the experiences of underrepresented people in Lewisville and that it opens up conversations within the city about what Lewisville's government and residents want for our town and how we want to define ourselves. I also have a wish for this work to continue in a manner that is sustainable across time and that our work stimulates buy-in from people on Lewisville's boards, commissions, and councils in such a way that equity, diversity, and inclusion becomes a through line at all levels of government. An EDI position and task force would ensure this. Thank you for this opportunity to contribute to this conversation. My gratitude goes out to my fellow task force members, to Megan and Meredith, to Anthony and Emily and their support team, to Mayor Stoltzman, and again to city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. That was wonderful. Well, I think we should just, you know, round out this party. I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
It looks like Lou Yu has comments as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Lou.
Can can everybody hear me? Yeah, my camera is not working. Apologize for that. I'm Lou Yu. I'm just echoing what my fellow team members have said. I want to say thank the city of Lewisville for putting together this very important task task force. Also, the consultants, the city hired, did a good job facilitating the project. I'm very appreciative of my fellow team members for putting their time to support this initiative. I think most importantly, the input from the community has been obtained and has been incorporated into the recommendation presented tonight by the team. I hope this is a very good beginning of a meaningful journey that will continue and that ultimately will produce a more welcoming environment for all residents of the city of Lewisville. My wife and I absolutely love Lewisville. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mayor, I think we only have one task force member left, at least Leanne Trotta is the last person. Leanne, would you like to say a few words before we close out the report?
I raised my hand so I can be included. I just want to reiterate the the thanks and appreciation to the mayor and our city and our consultants for really moving the work along. Two things I just wanted to share in addition was just how the work has made me feel more welcome and that I am a part of the city. And I think that's something that I would like, you know, others to feel that the city welcomes everyone. And then the second thing was something that came up in our last meeting last week, and it was talking about getting to know your neighbors. I apologize which task force member mentioned it, but it just really brought it home to me because, yes, I'm hopeful that the city will be proactive about the steps that really the recommendations and really moving those action steps forward. But at the same time, I have been challenged to continue the work, the good work, really being able to listen better, being able to be brave, being able to have those difficult conversations and really lean into the discomfort, even though I have been uncomfortable throughout this process. And I think it's been good for me and good for my family and good for our whole community. And I'm really hopeful that our whole city can embrace the work and keep moving in this direction. I think it's a work that we need to do collectively. So thank you so much.
So Mayor Stoltzman and Emily, please feel free if you'd like to say a closing word here, but we just wanted to close and express our appreciation to the city of Lewisville for allowing us to be a part of your team to conduct these important conversations and learn from this amazing group of residents who we have been inspired by. Emily, do you have closing thoughts before we turn over the program?
Thanks, Anthony. And thank you again to to all the task force members. I just, I I know there's been a lot of, a lot of thank yous going around tonight, but I I think we would be remiss to not really extend our gratitude to all the task force members who, again, took a little bit of a chance to show up to do this work in a process that a lot of them were not necessarily familiar with. And they have been incredible. There is such an incredible vast, deep set of knowledge and some really just beautiful hearts as well. And so I just want to express my gratitude to all the task force members for being on this journey with us. It's been a really beautiful experience. And again, I think, you know, the only last thing, I I said this a little bit earlier, but you know, we've put in nine months worth of work to get to this point, to get to, you know, this set of issues and and recommendations. And it was, it was worth it, but the work's now. And the recommendations are a series of of long term items that will will take some time to unfold. But I think someone mentioned this that can be immediately put into to be willing to roll up those sleeves and 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 get to work. So thank you. I I appreciate you all. Mayor Stoltzman, thank you again. And to all of city council, thank you as well. Anthony?
So with that, we will turn it over. Thank you again to Megan and Meredith, to everybody who participated in any focus group and for your vote of conference. The vote, the floor is yours. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. That was, that was incredible. Thank you. And and I will always remember the beautiful poetic description of running together rather than the handoff of the baton. So I look forward to running together with everyone. I just, I think that was brilliant. And so I will turn it to council right after we take public comment on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment on this topic, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. All right, seeing now, I'll turn it over to city council members. And first, Nikki, we have council member Lee.
Thanks. That that was extraordinarily moving. I remember those those interviews that we council member Brown and I were privileged to be a part of so many months ago. And how And how much confidence we had in Emily and Anthony and and in all of you who participated. And I, it's, it's hard to know how to put into words from our and how much we appreciate your putting yourself out there. One of the things that I think was brought home to us is this is hard, hard work for people to do. And bringing your own stories to bear on a challenging set of constellation of issues with the pressures around us. I think you deserve so much of our thanks for that. And I know it wasn't easy, or at least that's my understanding. And thank you for sharing a part of yourselves and putting a part of yourselves in that report. I know that when we first started this, our council said we don't want a, an effort that results in a report that goes up on somebody's shelf. That is, that absolute, it's better not to even do it. Because it's not respectful, and it's not where we want to go. And everybody on council, I think, and I don't speak for, I'm careful not to speak for my fellow council members, but I think that that's really an important thrust of what we said early on. So we will be evaluating and running together, as the mayor said. I, I want to share the other thing I wanted to do is share a story that I learned from a person in my, in my ward. As many of you may know, I'm running for reelection, and tomorrow we'll find out what the results of that are. But you get to talk into a lot of people, but this story spoke to me in, to my bones. And I think you'll, you'll may understand why after I, I tell it. But he, and I'm not going to mention his name, but he owns a business, his he's been here, his family has been here for many generations, miners to begin with. And he described for me stories that he heard through the ages. Many of you know plenty about the miners in Louisville. And those were very dangerous jobs. They were be, it was before, you know, MSHA and and much of any really strong protections for the safety of miners. Miners died, not just afterward from breathing coal dust, but accidents in mines were not uncommon. And one of the things that's really interesting about Louisville, if you dig into the mining history, is that we had at one time people who were Polish, who were French, who were English, who were Italians. And all of them worked in the mines. They weren't quadrilingual. And they were doing some of the most dangerous difficult work that you could be doing at that time. And they weren't getting paid very much, and they weren't treated very well. And we were a stone's throw away from Ludlow. Part of that same mess, and there was death and a lot of metamorphic pressure around these folks and what they were doing. And they had to rely on each other. All these people, most of whom were not at the top of society in the US. Most of them had yet to make big marks in our community, wherein others. They had language barriers, some of them had religious barriers, social barriers, you name it. And they were down in the mines, and they had to communicate with one another. They had to communicate to survive. They had to communicate to be able to hold, and they held one another accountable every single day. They had hand signals and all kinds of very intricate ways of working together. And to me, that is one of the most beautiful metaphors. Because once they left the mines, they would go out in their own communities and their own churches and their own bars. But yet, what they did every week was life-affirming and necessary, and the community had to have that kind of cooperation to survive, and they did. And we can do it again. That's a model that this community was built on. It was built on. And so as you talk about it, and I loved evidence, calling about loving the small-town feel. That is the essence of small-town feeling in my view. And it's something I'm so proud of in the history of Louisville, because there's a lot not to be proud of in some of the things that have happened over time. But we can make each other feel welcome, and we can help each other make a better community. And that kind of beloved community, it's something we can look back on and look forward to. And I really appreciate all of what you've done, all of what staff has done, all of what council has done. And it's going to be a step in the right direction. And I am so glad that you've done what you've done, better than I could have ever imagined it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. And I see the other councilmember hands, and I'll, I'll get to them so everyone can share their things. I just want to kind of direct us for a moment. Part of our agenda topic tonight and part of staff's request is to give some direction to staff on sort of next steps and first actions. And so just taking from what Anthony has told us and what Emily has told us, and the community members have told us, it seems like there are some things that they felt we could do immediately and get started on. And then there are other things that we need staff to develop a plan and come back to council with more what our next steps could be. So I'll just try proposing something and seeing if the group can get behind it before we carry on with the next set of comments. So it would just be to ask staff to work through the report on some of the longer-term activities and some of the things like staff positions and training and things like that, and come back to council with a proposal on how to go forward with that. But in the meantime, that we would like to give direction to staff, particularly the special events and art staff, that we would hope in the next year, or not just hope that we, our expectation is in the next year that we would add additional cultural events and holidays, and that we could purchase flag, flags for our utility poles and other areas to celebrate more holidays and make it more inclusive, safe space, just as is described in the report, not just for one holiday, but for many holidays. So to give that direction to the cultural arts and event staff to go forward with that, get started on that. Additionally, for staff to get started with providing all city resources in Spanish language and to have additional training around ASL and Spanish language. And then for the other things that do take additional staff and resources and planning to come back to council with a recommendation or a couple of options for council on how we can continue to go forward with the next steps. But those seem to be the first steps that the task force has asked us to get started on. So maybe through discussion, if folks disagree with that, or maybe just through head nods, if that seems like a good place to start. And maybe other people have additional suggestions they want to add in. I don't see any heads shaking no. So that may be where we end up, but let's go through the hands, and maybe people want to add to that or modify it. Or perhaps people just want to give their thanks to the group. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I fully support your suggestion, your direction to staff. I was going to make something very similar, so I think that's a very, a very good place to start. I think that in terms of developing a plan, you know, I would very much like to see the more substantive pieces to be incorporated into the work plan, if, if not sooner. I know we're going to go through a work planning process here, beginning in the next month or two. And I think it would be, it would be an important, important for us to incorporate the recommendations of the, of the task force, especially the things that might take a little bit more resources and time into that, into that particular process. But to your point, there are things we can do now, and there are things that we might need, might not even need the work planning process for. So I would like to see a, a full plan from staff. I also just want to add my thanks to the, to all of the members of the EDI task force. Such an inspiring group of individuals, such an inspiring group of stories, of remarks this evening. I also want to add my thanks to Emily and to Anthony, who I think did an excellent job of, of shepherding us as a community through this process. I'm really looking forward to working, to running with you, to working side by side to implement the recommendations of this task force. You know, I'm, I'm committed to, to this work, and I want to make sure that, that we as a council get that done. So I'm going to continue to work to make sure that we incorporate EDI into every aspect of our, of the, of the business that we do here at the city of Louisville. So thank you again to everybody who played a part in this. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work on this and start really starting the work now. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to say, you know, I, I attended the first couple of meetings, and it was two of my favorite meetings, just to be a part of that. And, you know, I think it was, it was wisely, I guess, suggested that you guys need to do this work outside of council and for, you know, to not, to not be in all those meetings, to let you guys really do some, have some hard conversations and, and kind of work through your process before you were able to get to a conclusion and bring things back to me. But I just have to say, I'm so jealous of all those conversations that you guys got to have. And, and what I understand is that the process was incredibly hard. And I mean both hard as in you put a lot of work in, but also difficult work to do at, at times. And, you know, that it was emotional, both sort of, not, I think all emotions are good, but good and bad in the sense that there were probably some tough emotions, and then some really sweet emotions as you guys were bonding and really starting to find a community within our community. And I think that's fantastic to hear. And, and I, and I do trust that that will continue for all of you. And I think it sounds like a lot of us were struck by the relay reference. And I think that, you know, I definitely thought about that on the, on the onset of, that might be how I sort of pictured it, is this like, okay, so some people are going to do some work, and then they're going to pass the baton to us, and it's up to us to take that suggestion and do some work. And then maybe it's the baton goes to staff to take those directions and do some work. And it, and that always, that never felt great to me. I guess why I wanted to be in the meetings the whole time. I, you know, and so I really love that thought and that concept. And I am really excited to, to both take the baton in the sense of doing the hard work. We all need to do work, not, not just, just you folks, but everyone. We all need to do our role. And I'm happy to take the baton in the sense of taking on some workload and putting my elbow grease into this, but then also realizing that we're all in this together, and we're all working together to try to do these next things. And so I certainly, you know, as far as the recommendations, you know, I am 100% in support, Mayor, of continuing an EDI task force. I think it's, it's a crucial thing. And I say that the task force is a really, or commission is a really big deal. It takes staff time, it takes money, it takes resources, it takes all of your time. There's the whole selection process, and it's, it's a lot of work. It is not just snap your fingers and you have a new committee. And so I, I say that with great meaning, that I think we should do it, knowing it takes all those things. I think it's incredibly important. And I would also say that, you know, we have a lot of open spots on other commissions that as far as representation on those commissions, I think it would be incredible if some of the people that, that committed to the EDI task force thought about applying to some of our other commissions that, that, that really affect decisions that, that the city makes. And to, you know, some of the other recommendations, you know, the, an EDI staff, I think is a fantastic idea. And Mayor, everything you mentioned, the, the culture events, the holidays, more flags, every, basically, the report. These are all awesome initiatives and awesome things for us to take on. And I think it is important for us to step forward into this. We have been saying all along, and I'm sure you have missed some meetings where, you know, we're talking about the budget, we'll talk about the budget later tonight. And it's such a constant refrain for someone to say, well, and also remember, we're going to get a report from the EDI task force, and that may affect our budget. We've been waiting for this and waiting for the ask of how this might affect our budget going forward, whether it's staff, whether it's events, whether it's whatever it might turn out to be. So I think you have a very willing council in that regard to, to take on those things where, where money might otherwise stand in the way. I will say that a lot of the recommendations short term are really on staff. And so, you know, as someone who wants to take the baton and start running hard, you put a lot of work on staff, in my opinion, and I, and I'm very happy for them to take that on. And I think the role that City Council has to play right this moment is to say, yes, we, we do think staff should put that hard work in. But there is going to be, you know, more conversations around how we continue this work together. And I'm 100% on board and appreciate all of you for all of your work. It's just been really fantastic to read everything and to be a part of this. And I do also appreciate the, the common call that this is the start of something, not the end. So very excited to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pretamani?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start off by thanking Anthony and Emily, you know, shepherding us and the testers through this process. And then coming out of the report, I, I think you might be surprised that probably all the members of council have probably already read the report in preparation for this meeting, as it was part of our packet. So we're all, we're all supportive, we're all on board. You know, we started this off with the unanimous vote, and I think we're going to have unanimous support tonight based upon what the mayor structured. And thank you, Mayor, for doing that. It's interesting, as you were going through that, I was checking off my little list here as well. So now I think we're, we're very much in line with moving ahead. I do think, Mayor, is the way you laid it out, there are some that require more discussion. And I will note on our advanced agenda, EDI update was on December 7th. That may be too soon, but just know that that was in our fourth thought of, well, we want to do this sooner than later. So whether it's part of the December 7th agenda, later in December, a part of our work plan for 2022, everyone should get the message that we think this is very, very important. You know, one of the things I'm struck by, you know, in my years of, of doing things similar to this is you can do EDI or you can live EDI. And I think we want to live EDI. I think we want it to become part of our culture, whether that means changing culture or evolving culture. And that's not an easy thing to do. And that's, but that is something that we believe, I believe, that this council and this staff and this city is committed to do. And we do know that the county and the Boulder Valley schools are doing things. So we want to make sure that our efforts are in collaboration. So we want to make sure that our efforts are in collaboration and in concert with those as well. So that we have the, the greatest impact on that. And we talk about staffing and this is one of the discussions I want to have, you know, in the future when it's appropriate, when staff is ready to do this. Um, I want to, I want to do this in a way that it really supports the education, the training, the procedures. So it becomes what we do, not something we do. It's just part of, you know, ingrained in the way we, we think about hiring, we're doing my training, we think about promotion. We think about serving our customers, whoever they may be. So I, I, I support your direction, Mayor, and I look forward to working on this and collaboration with my fellow counselors, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I will just echo all of the thanks, first of all, of all of the other. Uh, council members to Emily and Anthony and the whole task force. The efforts that you've put forth have been amazing and I'm very grateful for where we've come. Um, we have not come very far, but, but at least we have a roadmap now. And, and I'm hundred percent behind the, the whole concept of going down that road and as quickly as possible. If we need, uh, a Tesla. I would also like to say that first. Well, first of all, I think the flag issue was already in our work plan that was discussed before. About how we were going to deal with, with all kinds of issues like that with flags. Um, the other thing I want to mention is that I am very aware of different ethnicities. Uh, partly because I'm what. My family always referred to as a mutt. I have six different nationalities in my family history, three different religions from. Three, four different continents, um, and so. I, I guess I'm kind of embodying a lot of this stuff that we're trying to do for everyone. And so I just want to say that I'm a hundred percent, uh, in favor of the, the proposals that the task force put forth. And what the mayor has proposed, uh, for our first steps to be, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey, um, thank you, everyone, for those comments and so I'll, um, turn to the city manager and ask if that is clear enough direction. For tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thanks City Council for all of your comments and for, um, reviewing all the opportunities that the task force has brought forward and giving that. Direction, I think that's clear for us for some short-term actions, um, and long-term actions, just. Want to, um, also, uh, remind folks and, um. Who are listening in City Council that we are also in the midst of an internal equity diversity and inclusion assessment and roadmap process. Um, which is really important to ensure that our organization is gonna be working hand in hand. Um, in the work that we are doing in conjunction with the community and our community partners. Um, and however that might look moving forward and also, um, internal in the organization, so. We are in the process of kind of developing the goals and action steps there, so that work is still underway, but I. foresee based on the assessment and the data that we've collected so far and the recommendations we have so far, that there'll certainly be. A lot of, um, synergy in moving this work forward together and, um, I think it'll be. Um, you know, very impactful and really accomplish a lot of the. Just kind of vision and hopes that have been reflected through the community and of course, we're so grateful for the partnership. Of the community and the direct partnership and guidance and. Um, just allowing the task force, the task force members allowed us to participate in this process and learn from them. As well, has been really impactful on the staff who have been engaged in the process too, so, um, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Davis, all right, well, thank you all very, very much, um. Um, for all of the time and effort and that is the conclusion of this agenda item for tonight, but really just the beginning, um, of our continued race. So thank you very much. Next on our agenda as a council tonight, we're going to be talking about the adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget and so we'll take up resolution number. Um, seventy-eight, series twenty-twenty-one, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues. For each fund and adopting a budget for the city of Louisville, for the calendar, Louisville, Colorado. We do get some emails about that, for the calendar year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-two and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-two. And also resolution number seventy-nine, series twenty-twenty-two, annual appropriation resolution for the city of Louisville, Colorado. Calendar beginning January first twenty twenty-two and ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-two and then last resolution eighty, series twenty nineteen. Uh, I guess I'll ask for a clarification from staff, I think that's likely resolution eighty, series twenty twenty. Uh, one. A resolution levy.
That, that should be twenty twenty-one, sorry.
Okay, and so that will be, uh, we'll just amend that right now, so it'll be resolution number eighty, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution levy, general property taxes. For the year twenty twenty-one to help defray the costs of government for the city of Louisville for the twenty twenty-two budget year. And so I'll turn it over to our city manager, Megan Davis, for a presentation.
Thank you, City Council, um, we have provided, uh, links to the materials from the previous budget conversations and. Um, some specific details around the recommended budget by fund as well as the capital improvements plan. Um, and the public hearing packet from October nineteenth. For the twenty twenty-two budget, this process included numerous opportunities for staff and council to work together. Um, on the budget and to capture, um, all of the changes from the twenty twenty-two. Originally planned budget through our by nail budget process of last year. So we are presenting to you these resolutions to adopt the budget, appropriate the funds and levy the property taxes. To approve the budget, um, I will just ask Director Kevin Watson if he has any additional comments.
Oh, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
No, I really don't have any other comments, I just wanted to make a note that. Uh, we've had four separate meetings on the twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Uh, I believe we've captured all of council's recommendations from those meetings. And this is the exact same budget that was presented at the public hearing on October nineteen. So with that, we're recommending, uh, approval of the three resolutions, thank you.
Thank you very much and just while staff was talking, I, um, was reading the titles off of the very first page, which is the agenda page and I just confirmed. That all the resolutions as listed in the packet have the correct dates, so we won't need any special motions, they're all correct in the packet. Um, and so with that, we'll turn it over to members of the public, if there's any members of the public that would care to comment on our budget. Please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. Seeing none, I'll take it back to council members for comment.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor, um. I want to thank the city manager, uh, Davis, finance director, Kevin Watson and all the staff, all the staff. Uh, a job well done, um, you know, I, I really appreciate, uh, Director Watson, the way you've documented all of the discussions that we've had. And all the changes to the budget, so it's made it very easy to follow. Um, you know, I believe the budget that we have before us reflects what we value as a city. In services and investments and community, um, and, and with that, I'm ready to make. Uh, motions if you're ready, Mayor.
Um, I, that would be great, thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number seventy-eight, series twenty twenty-one.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes. Mayor Proton Maloney, would you like to keep us rolling?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number seventy-nine, series twenty twenty-one.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number eighty, series twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey, and any discussion of the motion?
I just have one comment on this one, um, so in twenty twenty-two, I'm sure we'll have a more, um. Robust discussion around the property tax levy, um, just given some of the changes that the state has made. To the, uh, property tax collection on the residential side to defray the cost of increased housing and so, um, that won't take. That doesn't take effect for this year, it doesn't impact our property tax collection for next year. But it will impact our collection for the following year, um, so I'm sure that'll be an interesting discussion, discussion and I look forward to it, any other discussion?
Seeing then, could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, our next topic for this evening is discussion, direction, action, boarding commission application review. Uh, says we'll have a staff presentation, so I'll guess that the city clerk mute is gonna tell us a little bit about this.
Hello, everyone, um, we back that time of year when it's, uh, boarding commission application time. Uh, applications are due, uh, November eighth, they're trickling in slowly, so if you know people who are interested, I encourage you to. Tell them to apply before the deadline on the eighth. Um, you guys as a body will need to make your appointments to the vacancies to the various boards, uh, at the December twenty-first meeting. Uh, you, we've done this a couple of ways in the past, uh, one way is for you to appoint a committee, uh, two, to review all the applications and make recommendations to council on. Who you want to appoint and who you might want to interview and another option is for all of you to review the applications as a whole. Um, or at least more than two of you to, um, do a special meeting and do it as a whole. Um, and decide, uh, who you want to interview, who you don't want to interview. So that's the baseline, you guys will probably come up with a third or fourth or fifth way to do it if you wanted to, but those are the, the ways we've done it most recently, so. Tonight, if you guys could come up with, uh, next steps in this process, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you, City Clerk Mute, and so any members of the public care to comment on this agenda topic? Seeing none, council members have a proposal on how we move forward, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the process that we did, that we implemented last year, having two members of the. Of the council review the applications and then propose a slate of candidates. For review, so if there's support for that, I would, I would, I would be in support of that, I guess, it's the operative word.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown, Mayor Proton Maloney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilor Brown, I, I think in general, I agree with Councilor Brown. I do note, um, something that surprised me when I went through the list, which is on page three sixty-four, the last page. Um, we have six, is it six people to seat on planning commission? Uh, you know, I think that one's significant, so I think, um, it might be good for us to have a hybrid. Approach to this, you know, for the planning commission, which is probably, um, well. I'll just say it, I think it's probably the most important commission that we have as far as, for, um. Affecting, uh, policy and influence over what we do in the city and I, I think. We probably want to have the council interview those particular candidates, otherwise I completely agree with Councilor Brown. Um, and I would volunteer as, as one of the members of council to at least go through the initial review. Of the applications, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney, so I think, um, you, uh, were in agreement with Councilmember Brown, so my recollection of how this has worked is we'll appoint two members. And they'll read the applications and try to narrow the field, um, and. Tell us, you know, which areas we need to do interviews and it is, so in some cases, we may have. Let's say we have three openings and three applicants and they're all qualified, marvelous applicants, then we wouldn't need to interview those. So in the past, the subcommittee has helped us, um, you know, to be able to facilitate that and then make a recommendation to the full council of. This is the group we'll all interview and then of course, the final decision always comes to the entire body, um, so that sounds like a plan. Um, I would just want to remind the group, in the past, we've posted. The meeting of the committee of two as a meeting so that anybody from the public could attend, um, and so that, um, council members could attend. If, you know, people wanted to see what went into that process and I think that's important for transparency, um, so I'd ask that we do that again. And then, um. I just wanted to also let everyone know that the staff made improvements to our process this year on the application form to eliminate any kind of discriminatory things from the. Or things that could be discriminatory for, from the form, um, and to improve the process from the onset, so I want to thank staff. Um, for taking a look at that and making the process already better than it's been. So, so far, I think there's pretty good consensus on having a committee of two get started for us. And then have the whole council take a look at their recommendation and then do the interviews based on their recommendation and then appoint as a group. Councilmember Dickinson, where do you fall?
Yeah, um, as someone who was on that committee last year, I thought it went really well, um, it wasn't. You know, a, a horrible amount of extra time, um, to do it, but I, I thought it was, I thought it was an efficient way to get. Um, a good, a good slate and again, I, I think you pointed out. It really depends on the, the commission and how many people have applied, right, how, how easy or hard that is. So, you know, I, I think, you know, when you have eight applicants for three positions and they're all amazing. That is hard and it's good to have the community to at least get that down potentially to five or. Or recommend a three with a couple more and, and then even decide, you know, what to interview, so I think they went really well, um, and suggest we do it again. Um, I'm certainly wel- willing to volunteer to do it again, I enjoyed doing it, um, at the same time, doesn't need to be the same people every year, obviously, so. Um, open to, open to any, um. Uh, variation that, that you want on that, but I thought it was good last year.
Um, would it, would any other folks like to put their name in the hat for consideration, we have Mayor Proton Maloney and Councilmember Dickinson who have volunteered. I don't want to exclude anybody, if you want to campaign and then lobby. Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, all right, well, thank you both, um, for offering your services, that, that's incredible. And we appreciate it and just a reminder to everyone else that we will post that as an open meeting, um, so everybody can have access and, and. All members of public can attend and everything like that, so it's very inclusive and then it of course will come back to the full council, so. The direction to staff is that we'll appoint a committee of two, which, uh, so I moved that we'll have, appoint a committee of two, which is Mayor Proton Maloney. And Councilmember Dickinson, and that the meetings for their, uh, subcommittee review will be posted and open and they'll make a recommendation back to council of who to interview. And any people to directly appoint, is there a second? Great, any discussion, Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, yes, um, I, I agree that this is a wonderful way to do it, my request would be that. We all get copies of all of the applications, like as we're doing for the city manager position.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey, and, um, City Clerk Mute, any problem with that?
Nope, that was the plan, you'll get the same notebook you get every year, um, with all the applications in it.
Thank you very much, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, the motion carries, that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Thank you, next up, we have council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items, Councilmember Dickinson.
Just a quick comment, I'm walking around the main sheet, uh, today and staff is doing a great job of, you know, breaking down the summer, um, setup and. Let's get in towards, uh, putting up the, the winter setup for all the restaurants and it was, I had a nice moment of a restaurant tour asking me like. Hey, can you just tell me, like, what's the plan, what's going on, I just want to know, I was like, oh, they're doing this and then this and this, he's like, oh, great, thanks, I just wanted. I just wanted to know what the plan was and that was actually probably a month ago, um, but, um, they're putting a lot of work in and I think it's gonna be great and just letting everybody know that the. This weekend, by this weekend, and all of that will be set up for everybody.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson, and if you could make the weather a little bit nicer for the weekend too, Mayor Proton Maloney?
Well, I think you're giving him credit because it's gonna be good anyhow, so whatever. I just want to make note on the advanced agenda, we have November seventeenth through the nineteenth, the city manager interviews. Um, at the most, we're probably looking, uh, city council being involved on the eighteenth and the nineteenth. And it may be only the nineteenth and when I have more information, I will certainly let you know, but. Um, just, you know, just making sure, everyone's gonna, you know, it, it will be an all-day affair if it's only on the nineteenth. Um, but anyway, it's the most important decision that we will make as a body, so, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, um, Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, yes, I would just like to encourage everyone to remember to vote tomorrow.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. The staff is helping me with the write-up. I wanted to let you all know that's coming. The Louisville Police Department got special recognition, a special recognition award from the Beth Haynes Award, time of year. A, a member from another force got the big award, but our whole department got special recognition. And we had about four officers nominated for consideration. And it's an award for exemplary service in victims of abuse and partner violence and domestic violence. And listen, sitting, listening to the stories about what our officers have done for community members was remarkable. And really going beyond the obvious and putting in extra time, making, you know, human and interpersonal connections. In some cases where people weren't even, didn't even report an issue, but the officer noticed something wrong. Continued to pursue beyond the obvious, continued to ask questions until they found out what was actually happening. So just some really remarkable police work. And so the staff is helping Gloria and the communication staff is helping put together a communication so we can share that story with the rest of the community. Any other committee reports or future agenda topics? All right. Seeing none, get your COVID booster shots and we'll see you next time. We're adjourned.